...to the United States of America.
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Uh, let's see, Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
And Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Any other needs in participation, any reason for general adjustments? Very none, you have a personnel report in front of you. New hires, kitchen helper, and high school special ed aide. Motion to accept the personnel report.
Some support.
Roll call please.
Uh, let's see, Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Lang.
Yes.
And Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Green, you are up.
Thank you, well, nice to meet you all. So my name is Rod Green and I'm a consultant from M A S B. I'm a former superintendent, so I told the other crew I was superintendent for 24 years. And East China was my main district over in St. Clair County, if you're familiar. St. Clair and Marine City were the two high schools. So, um, I was telling Bob earlier that I actually was principal in Reese, uh, Tuana, but, well, I guess, in the eighties. But, um, anyway, last few years I've been doing searches for M A S B. So this would be my 27th search. So I've done a few and I've got, uh, kind of a methodology of doing it. So if I want to just kind of go through and talk to you a little bit about the process and, um, and get your thoughts on some of the things that we've done already. So first thing, if you wouldn't mind looking at this form right here, this one is the preliminary posting. So it's the one with the board members that are on it. And, um, so just kind of looking at this, I put this together just to kind of get the ball rolling. And so I don't know if there's anything that you feel like should be changed or not, but it's wide open. We can always change it. But I just kind of grabbed your, um, turnaround district concept that you are and then I took some of this stuff, one, two, three, and four there from your website. And then I put in the middle there is kind of the paragraph that we're talking about, you know, seeking a strong leader with some skills in finance and curriculum. And then, um, just talking about communication and some of the other points. Now, just so you know, this is just like a preliminary posting. So what we need to do is stakeholder input and then actually have a profile that we develop. So that's one date that I want to talk to you about. So we would put this up along with this other thing, which you see here is your, this is your turnaround district, uh, profile. So we could, we can leave this as our profile and just say, that's what we're looking for. Or we can put a few more points on it, which is normally what I would do. So this work you did, uh, when did you guys do this, last year or a couple of years ago?
Well, we're headed to D T N now for almost two.
Two years.
Two years ago, okay.
But that just, actually, that just came out of the, took the, um, profiles for turnaround teacher, turnaround principal, that one just came up in the last year.
Okay, alright.
Well, it was Chapman who'd been the principal, because that's the thought when it came out.
So it's the second year.
Okay.
So anyway, so that's up with this. So what's up on the website right now are these two things. Now, what I don't have in here is salary. So we, we should, we should talk about salary. And then, um, I've already taken a few calls on the position. You know, people see these come up, they call you and they want to know, you know, what's the story with that district? And so I've gotten a couple of calls on it. So I guess I wanted to talk to you a little bit about salary. What, what were people thinking? Have you had any thought on it? What was the previous one making? Do we know?
Yeah.
What do we know?
Yeah.
Super ten.
What was the superintendent right now?
Or, or previous, Carol or Tom or whoever.
Last, at least the last three or four.
Carol's is at 95. It's $5,000 educational allowance. She gets, aside from the time off on the day, but then she also gets a $12,000, $12,500 annual.
Okay.
I think that means Tom, I don't know. I think that's true.
So, so when I do salaries, just so you know, it's annuity plus salary. So you would take the 95 plus the 12, so it's really 107, 107.5. So then you, and then you, you add those two if you're giving them up. So if the person wants to make a hundred million, you add $7,000 annuity. If they want to make 105, they add $2,000 annuity. That type of thing. So those two combined, because they are both, you know, MIPsers eligible. So any annuity and your salary goes towards your return. But not things like education allowance or car allowance or anything like that. So that would be separate. So what I was going to suggest out here in terms of salary was 105 to 110. Now, you don't see very many superintendent jobs out under, under 100. But you were at 107.5, so, you know, 105 to 110, it sounds like it could work. Do you, what's your thought on, on how that works?
Why are annuities doing these high tiers superintendent contracts?
Doesn't have to be.
But it's common.
It's pretty common, but I've done a lot of contracts without an annuity.
Why not just have a base salary? Why do they do that? Just, what's the benefit?
It, it counts towards, uh, it's the same as salary. So it's just a way of, it's just a way of, you know. No, it's, it's kind of like, I mean, like, like Robin just said, well, the salary was 95. So that's what people start thinking is the salary is 95, but really, it was 107.5. That's what you really are paying. Because the salary and annuity are exactly the same.
But they could go out and get an annuity from anybody then, right?
No, that's a board paid annuity.
I understand. If we paid them the 107, they could go get an annuity.
Right, yeah, yeah. So we, we don't have to offer an annuity, you know, and when we work on the contract, we can say, we don't really want to offer an annuity. And it's no problem. But, but what we need to set, set today is the salary range.
So I have another question, because I don't know the answer to this. In her, in the superintendent's contract, I think it was in those as well, I don't know about the lawyers, but it has $5,000 educational allowance. Does that pay now whether there's an education?
No, it could have reimbursed.
That's reimbursed, that's reimbursed. And I probably would not put that in either. Now, I've done.
You don't want to.
I've done a lot of these contracts, and so what I'm going to show you next meeting is, you know, I'll take your contract and then I'll take what I have usually done and I'll show you those two things and then we can decide. So we're completely in control. And, and I think if we prepare ourselves, when we get down to the end, then we offer the contract. We don't wait for them to say what they want. We just say, this is what we're thinking, and then they talk and I'll help you with that. So I'll, I'll help you negotiate that. So, so yeah, lately I have not been putting in educational allowances and if I do, it's only been 2,000. You know, so it's not 5,000. And the annuity is also pretty high, 12,500, but that's because your salary's low. So you can't, you can't think of about that way. You have to think of it as 107.5, that's what you're paying. So whether you call it an annuity in salary or you just call it salary.
Or annuity is tax different.
They are tax different by just FICA. So neither party pays FICA on it, but both parties pay return on it. So your FICA is 7.65, so you do save that. I, I admit that, but the, the majority of your cost is the same.
It just gives the perception that something's being hidden.
Yeah, let's not do it.
Agreed.
Let's not do it. I'm with you.
And to be honest, that's why sometimes just to do it. Somebody says, what's your superintendent make? Oh, 110, but they got 10,000 value annuity. They'll really make 110, make 120.
Right. Well, when I saw the 95 for you guys, I did not, I did not see the 12.5. So I was feeling like, hey, it's a little low, I was going to tell you that. But at 107.5, you're, you're right in the ballpark.
So is everybody okay with the polish at 105 or 110? Okay.
Alright, so I'm going to, I'll put that in the posting so people want, they want to see that.
Yeah.
That's why it helps them apply. So other than that.
We're not paying moving expenses.
What?
We are not paying moving expenses.
Okay.
We got caught up in that with the last person.
There will be no educational allowance.
Gotcha. Easy. I'm, you know, flexible, my main name. Alright, um.
Well, everything that we're saying here probably comes out of an experiential basis.
Sure. Hey, and I will, I will help you with all of this and we are in charge of it. So when I, when I show you the language, I'm going to see, in fact, Robin, make a note to send me the current contract or the one that you had, if it's Carol or if it was Tom, whatever. And I'll look at that and then I'll look at the one we usually do and see what the differences are and then we'll talk about it next time. So we'll be prepared for the end. That's the, if you have watched any searches, where people get caught up, in my mind, is at the end. The consultant comes and does all the stuff, but then when they get their candidate, they leave the board with the.
With the contract.
With the contract. And so then, you know, it's Bob calling the guy and saying, hey, this is looking on us. Much better if I'm helping you with that, trust me. So I will do that for him, the only consultant that does that. So I do bargaining for M A S B, so that's fine. Alright, so the other, so that's that. So let me, let me switch to this paper here. Go to this one. So the, the one thing that we need to, um, think about is stakeholder input. Now, um, I don't know if you did that the last time when you did a search, but usually what I would do is I would come to the district and meet with the staff after school. And, um, so if they're getting out at, you know, and this is why you guys are here, you can help me with trying to set up a schedule. But then I also want to meet with, if their support staff would meet with me or if any community would come to a meeting. Like at five or six o'clock or whatever, whatever time we get people here, we would invite people. And then I want to meet with the board at the same time. So what, what I'm trying to think of doing is, when can I do this? So I, I actually put down a date of March 1st. And I don't know if that would work with people's schedules and I'm a little bit flexible. I've got some other dates I could possibly do. But it would be nice if I could get the board to come at the end of that day, like at five o'clock or six o'clock. And we could talk, and then what I want to do is talk about what people did, what people told me. I want to tell that to the board. So, um, so I, I don't, you know, obviously we don't have everybody here. But what, Melissa, what's, what's the schedule for the staff? Like I know I saw parent teacher conferences, they're coming up.
That's next week.
Next week, so the following week, you know, what time do they get out? I mean, do you have?
Probably the last one's four o'clock.
Do you have?
Elementary building.
Elementary's at four.
Do you have March 5th available? We've got a board member who's out of town. Concerned that we have a meeting scheduled on, on the, the 5th.
No, I'm ready with schedule, we're meeting is at 12.
12. I, I don't really have the 12 available.
We're at the 5th.
What is she at?
It's kind of up in here, but I don't know. What about you, Dempsey? I mean, your schedule is?
I'm good.
Where we're at, on person, 5th is okay?
Yes.
So would the 5th be better? I, I can do the 5th. Oh, okay. I, I can do, I can do the 27, 28, or the 1st. I could do, um, the following week, I could do, uh.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the eight, I could, I could do these eight. You know, but we really only have a short window because we have to, we have to do the input, you know, before the closing of the postings. So the closing of the postings is in five, five weeks. So you want to do the input in a, in a couple of week period here. So I, unfortunately, Monday's. Yeah, I think I could do it on the 1st.
Which is better for this, 1st or the 8th?
First, first is good.
Okay, so we'll do the March 1st.
Alright, so then with the, with the kids, I mean, with the teachers, um, what would?
So we've just said the March 1st day end here is okay?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So let me just ask.
What time would you have the board at?
Well, let's, let's talk it through just for a second. So kid, teachers get out at three? I mean, what do you normally do with your teacher meetings?
We usually have administrative council at four. So that means elementary's out, middle school's out, high school's out.
Do you want, uh, I mean, because I can do more than one meeting. So I could do like one meeting at three, one meeting at four, one meeting at five. I mean, I can, I, I can do more if people's schedule. So usually like, when do you have your staff meetings? They're all elementary.
Oh, they have, they're starting to have them in the morning, right?
Yeah. So if, if dismissal is 2:55 in the high school, 2:40 at Meadow, 3:55 at Atkins. We could do a four o'clock at Atkins in the library.
Okay.
3:55 dismissal.
To four o'clock, maybe a 4:15. 10, 4:10 or something like that?
Yeah.
Whatever time they get down there.
Have it at the library at Atkins and invite Atkins and Thomas White.
Then, then come for the, well, he could do the high school earlier. Right, the high school like at three? So 3:15 maybe?
Yeah, P would lead that one.
3, 3:10, 3, 3:05. I mean, whatever it's, we're trying to do it for the, get the teachers there. You know, tell them, hey, consultant's 10 to be here, so he did a search, he wants to get input from you, you know, and, uh, try to get them there. And then it really only takes about 30, 40 minutes to listen to what they're thinking and then they can go and then I can do another group. So I could do the high school group at 3:10 or something?
And then Atkins T W at.
4:10. And then, um.
Do you have a date of the week that you plan on?
We're thinking about the 1st.
And that would be like work that Thursday.
So I would do them all, you know, back to back to back.
And then back here.
Yeah, so then what time, what time would you guys want to do? You want to do a 6? You, you like to do 5:30, what, what do you like to do?
Doesn't matter.
Well, 6 is.
Well, Larry, I have a question.
Yeah, so how about 5?
Well, do you need any time to simulate what you?
I, I, what I do is I do it, I'm going to have a survey, so. We haven't, I haven't sent you a survey yet, have I? Because I'm going to do that after today. So we're going to do a survey online for people. So I'm going to send this to you, post it on your website, people will click on it. So I'll have all that data before I, I need to talk to you. So then I'll take the data that I get from the three o'clock and four o'clock. It'll take me a few minutes to put together for five o'clock. Then I'll run down, get some copies from you and then we'll share it with the board. So yeah, if I could do, if I could, if we could make it 5:15, that would be great.
Here, here 5.
Yeah, do it right here, is this, this is the high school, right?
Yeah.
And I, and I would be here at 4:10, so yeah, five, five o'clock, 5:15.
We're going to be at Atkins at 4:10.
Oh, sorry, alright. How far is that away?
Five minutes.
So yeah, let's do 5:15. Is that okay with you guys?
Yeah.
And so my plan would be, we would talk about the contract at that time. We would talk about the data from the, from the meetings and then we would look at the profile. And so we just make sure, we bring this other profile and then some of the stuff that I'm coming up with from the teachers and make sure they're not conflicting. Does that sound alright?
The survey?
Yeah.
Is that something that staff could, could respond to in lieu of coming to the meeting?
Yes. And they will. So I'll get a few, it's always helpful to meet people.
Yeah.
You know, I talked to a couple of teachers out in the hallway today, you know, and they don't know what's going on. And it would be great to show them, hey, this is the process, this is what the board is doing, these are the dates. So that's all helpful, you know, info to get out to people.
Is there a benefit for the board to send this help to the staff to encourage them, huh?
Yes, we will do that. Robin, she's going to be my person, if you guys are good with that. And I'm going to send her everything. So by Monday, I'll send you an email that you can send to staff. I'll have the times and the dates and the survey. All of that stuff will be ready to go. In fact, I, I might not have the survey yet, but I'll get it probably by the end of the day on Monday. Because I don't think I wrote, M A S B, M A S B has put the survey together for me. So I think I was waiting for this meeting to do that. So, so if we did 3:10 and then 4:10 and then 5:15 and then, um, that would be great. Do that on the 1st, then we'll put it, post it on the website by the 2nd and then we still have about three weeks before the applications are due.
Good.
So that's the stakeholder input, but part of the, of the process. So then the, um, so that's the, our, the March 1st here on here. So everybody see that on this, this thing here? And I'll fix this up too, Robin, so you'll see that. I'll send you this again. So this would be, instead of six o'clock, this would be 5:15. So then we have March 23rd as the date for the application process. So you guys know that everyone applies online. So, so they've already started looking at the posting. So we put it up a week ago just to kind of get it going, to make sure we had a six week window. And, um, so they apply online, I can look at each application as it comes in. So then when we're done, at the end of the 23rd, I will tell M A S B, okay to go. And so then they'll write, they'll put this together in a packet for us. Now, the question would be, do you, do you like to look at things on your computer or would you rather have hard copy? Computer, computer? Bob, what about you?
I'll just clear it out.
Okay, so, so one way or the other, we can send it to them. So I usually work with Robin on this. If we want to make a hard copy, we can send it to Robin, she can make a hard copy for you. Or we can send it to you directly and it's, it's a link. And so then you just scroll through the applications and you just scroll through them. And you don't want to look at it on your phone probably, but on your computer it's okay, you know. So, um, either way though, we can do that.
Are you going to do any preliminaries for any to make sure that they meet minimum requirements?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll, you'll see all of them, but I will actually screen all of them and I will give you my top ones that I think that meet your criteria. So usually we get about 20 applications and of the 20, you know, there might be, you know, seven or eight or nine that meet what we're looking for. And then the rest really don't. So you can, you can look at the rest of them. I wouldn't keep any of those from you, but you can't, I mean, they probably aren't going to be worth the energy. That's what that memo is.
Okay.
So yeah, I'll definitely do some screening. And, um, some of them will not meet minimum requirements. So like, what are the minimum requirements? I mean, a master's degree for sure, um, some administrative experience for sure, probably teaching experience of some sort. So those kinds of things are minimum requirements and that's what we'll finalize on the 1st. So in addition to this thing here, we will finalize some of those requirements on the 1st and then we'll post those out there. Does that make sense? Okay, any questions about the 1st?
I do have a different.
Yes, please.
Out-of-state candidates, um, we can't stop them from applying, but my concern is that they don't necessarily understand the landscape of the state. And I'd just like for you to say, uh, yes or no and why?
I agree. And they have generally not been as competitive as I would like. Out-of-state candidates are not as competitive as in-state candidates. I have had one out-of-state candidate out of my 25 searches be the, be the candidate. But it was a very interesting situation. She just was very, um, exact in her requirements that she had in place and what the board was looking for and she just really did a great job of it. And so, but she had taken the Michigan classes, she had, um, done some other work in Michigan. She had her family in Michigan, there was a lot of Michigan ties. So I just, um, did a screening the other night with the board and we had a couple of out-of-state candidates and they just don't, they don't test the mustard for it. So I am a little skeptical of out-of-state candidates. I do want to give them a chance. I have talked to several, I had a guy on the phone yesterday, you know, and, um, and telling him, look, you know, if you're going to come back to Michigan, you've got to, you've got to detail why Michigan. You're living in Alaska right now, you know? I mean, you're just not, the board is not going to pick you without some better criteria. So that was the conversation that I had with him. So, um, so I agree with you and I want to make sure we look very carefully at those out-of-state people.
Thank you.
Okay, so after the 23rd then, it takes us about a week or so to put everything together in the packet and then we would email it to you. So once we email it to you, it'd probably be, you know, a day or two before the 3rd. Now, the 3rd is a Tuesday and I know you were suggesting Mondays. And I do have that Monday available, the 2nd. The only problem is, is that it's, it's a little bit of a tight timeline to the 23rd in terms of us getting all this information together for you. So, um, I could, we could adjust the 23rd a couple of days to the 21st or something like that. And then if the 2nd was better than the 3rd, I still have the 2nd available, which is on Monday night and that's the day after Easter. So I think your spring break is.
We're, we're off that day. I don't know if that makes a difference to the board.
You're off on the 2nd.
On the 2nd.
And your spring break is the week before though, right? Then, that's why I picked the 3rd. Because I looked at your calendar just to, you know, try to match up. But I'm open to, to do it on a Monday night if you feel like the board would be better in attendance, but I, I don't know.
I think, I think just the 2nd Monday is what Teddy's committed to make instructions here for. Not every Monday. Just the 2nd Monday to be in our regular schedule.
And what's the consensus on the 3rd?
I don't know. I don't know.
Alright.
And, and what's the consensus on the time? Do you like, do you like an earlier time? Do you like six o'clock? What, what times do you guys like? Did I hear it doesn't matter? What about the other people that aren't here, do you think?
Well, they don't tend to have trouble making it six.
True.
You want to do a six o'clock to try to encourage or?
Schedule for that and probably get something else to see if anybody opposes it.
Let's do that.
Leave it at six?
Yeah.
On, on the 3rd, Tuesday the 3rd.
Yeah, now this schedule that we're putting together is not something we're going to really be able to change very easily. Which is why we want to talk about it a little bit. But the most important time for the whole board to be here is the interviews. So if they trusted you to do the profile and they trusted you to do the screening and, but interviewing, if they can't make the interviews, you know, you're out of luck. I mean, it's just not going to work, you know? So it's, to me, this is the next date, we got to figure out if people can make that date.
And that's Saturday.
So yeah, so that's the Saturdays is, and that's what I, I don't know if people like Saturdays or if they're, if anybody works, I just don't know, so I picked it.
We didn't return interviews on Saturday before.
Haven't? And if people can commit to the day, you know? Now, I put down six hours, it might not be six hours, you know? So how many candidates do we usually interview? Maybe you're asking this question in your head, right? You're thinking about that.
Six hours is not a long time.
Usually, usually five candidates, you know, maybe. The minimum I like to do is four. But the most I usually do would be six. So usually they're hour interviews and you keep it moving, I don't mess around. I mean, it's just like, we got to stay focused, but, but it is, sometimes it feels like, if you don't have six qualified candidates that you really want to see, then you don't, you don't have six time. So the one I'm doing right now up in Houghton Lake, we've got five. And I saw one over on the west side, they got four. You know, it's not, there's no magic number. But obviously you need to get enough candidates, so you have some selection. So I'll have six hours, but I mean, I'm open for whatever we would need.
So Bob, what's the board, are we including just the board? Are you including?
Well, it's going to be a public meetings that we, you know, probably can come up there with.
As far as the interviewing panel?
Yeah.
I think it's sort of been the board.
Yeah, it's, it's going to just be the board. Yeah, it's going to just be the board doing the interviewing. But with the stakeholder, like when I meet with the staff, I'm going to. But with the stakeholder, like when I meet with the staff, I'm gonna give them these dates. And I'm gonna tell them, we want them to come, we want them to ask questions. The second round, the first round, we don't usually take questions from the public, but the second round we do. And so there's, I've got a kind of a methodology for how this includes people, if people are interested in coming. So I've done Saturday interviews before. I've had good crowds. I mean, I have twenty, twenty people in the audience watching the interview. Is this where you usually would do your interviews?
Yes, for the library.
For the library, front of the chair.
Okay. So we can talk about that. We'll talk about that as we get closer. But, you know, um, we'll set it up for an audience. We have the board sitting there, have the candidate. And then we work on the questions on that April third meeting. So we, we actually put, we do the screening, but we also talk about the questions we're gonna ask and, uh, making sure you're prepared for doing the interview.
You know, Bob came to my mind when we were talking about BTN, um, and their stakeholder and all this. How do we give Ben and Bob, Tadisha and Bob in this process? That's what I was thinking about when we talked.
Just invite her.
Well.
Cause he won't be talking with her.
I can talk with her as one of the stakeholders, you know, on that day that I'm here.
Well, she met with you, right? He was profiling.
Oh, okay. Can you share that?
Yeah, Bob, Bob met with her.
I guess, well, we, I'm just gonna plug it out. We don't want one stakeholder giving preferential treatment over another stakeholder, right? All stakeholders' input needs to be evaluated and taken into consideration, right? So while she is a very valuable resource, we don't want to, I hope I'm making sense. We want to make sure everybody's heard.
Why don't we invite her to the five fifteen on March first? Because that's, that's when the board is gonna be meeting and talking about the stakeholder input and let her be involved with that. So I did one of these the other night and I have community and the board. And we, we all talk about what I'm finding, any comments, any thoughts? And then, and then we put it down kind of in writing. So I mean, that's, we could invite her if she wanted to come.
I don't know. She and I is people who come.
Not to be active, just held. But if Bob does and she spent time with you, then that'd be all eight.
I guess I'm more, she can come on March first. She can be a part of the high school and middle school or, you know, the board setting up, matter. I'm more looking for a quality of, because we're on the interviews, right? Very good Saturday.
Right.
And for us, I think it would be good for the board to be in the process. If anybody who stuck around for all the interviews could give their feedback.
I have a process for that as well.
Okay.
So what we do on that is anybody that's here during the day of the interviews, I give them a feedback form. And so I have Robin helping with this, but we'll let them fill it out. And then we collect them at the end and let the board read them. And so before we deliberate as a board, we read the input from the people that are watching the interviews.
Okay.
So it's very solid process and people like it. And, um, and then we let them talk. If they want to talk, I mean, we can take public comment if you want. But basically, they write down their comments and it works out well.
And I'm used to with Peral and with, um, Desmond at Saturday interviews. And, um, people came to the podium. The, the BDA rep, a steelworker rep, somebody from township, yes.
Yeah, I don't mind the board taking comments at the end of the process, even though we've got the feedback forms. And maybe, I don't know if they did them back then like that. But even still, we take comments and, and then we deliberate. And it works out fine, you know? And I usually kind of manage the whole process, but, um, but yeah, we can do whatever. And so our goal at the end of the, of the seventh would be to narrow it to, you know, two or three. And, uh, and then we invite them back for another round. And so in the second round, usually the questions are more in-depth. So I'm gonna ask you guys, hey, what do you want to know about these, these folks? What can we ask this time that we should? Let's, let's do some thinking. So we develop questions from that and they can be personalized. So maybe one person gets a couple of different questions than the other person, just because of their backgrounds being different. That's fine. First round's a little more, the same questions for everybody, but the second round can be a little more in-depth. And follow-ups too. So, um, so let's go back to the seventh. So you think the seventh, that Saturday will work? How's that work for you guys' schedule?
Work?
Yes, it's good.
And so ten o'clock, start at ten o'clock. So people that are coming from a, you know, a little ways away can make it. And then, uh, we're just kinda going until we're done. So it might be a little bit longer than four, but, okay? So then the second round is the next, usually the next week or some. So I actually picked Friday, just partly because of my schedule. I'm busy on the fourteenth, but Friday is open. And I kind of, I guess I was thinking, Bob, since we set this meeting for Friday, that maybe Fridays are okay for you guys. So. For the candidates, it works out well. They like Fridays to interview. They like Saturdays to interview because it's not, you know, a normal during the week kind of a thing. So they're usually pretty free. So, yeah, they don't have to take out work. Saturday, they like work for sure.
Okay.
So how's Friday work for people on the thirteenth? Oh, I didn't think of that. Friday the fifteenth. We could change the date. We have a.
Does that work for you, doesn't it?
Yes, well.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So then we make that six o'clock and then we would, you know? So the other thing that we can consider is site visits. So that doesn't have to be decided tonight, but we can decide, hey, we're down to, we really like this one, but let's do a site visit. You know, and that's fine. So site visits are not as common today as they were, you know, ten or fifteen years ago. I think partly because of Google and some other things that are more readily available to people. But site visits are still possible to do. So if it's a nearby district, we, and we got plenty of time in the year. We set the site visit up for the next week or the following week. And then make your decision, you know, a week, a week after that or something. So you're normally going to be, you know, your meeting might not be until the second Monday of May. You know, to actually approve the contract, you could, you could wait that long. Or you could have a special meeting somewhere after that, after the site visit to do a report and then to approve. Now remember, it takes two motions, two separate motions to hire a superintendent. One motion is to offer the position, you know, pending a contract. And then the second time, after the contract's done, then you have approval of the contract. So you, you, you would do both things. So you could possibly offer the position and then wait a week and then approve the contract. But that's why we're gonna be prepared with the contract. So we're gonna, we're gonna be prepared. And all we have to do when we're ready to offer is to decide what number we want to put in. And then that's what we would offer. Now, the other thing that I do when I get to the final round is I send the, the contract to the candidates without any numbers in it, but just all the language. And I say, hey, if you got any questions, call me, talk to me about this contract. So I've had a few from candidates. They'll ask me about this or that. But the language is pretty common and people know what the language is. And so the only thing then that becomes is the annuity or the salary or whatever. But from my point of view, like, like I did, um, I did foot feature last fall. So, you know, successful candidate, when I called him up, he, he basically, he basically said, you know, he wanted the top of the range. And so then I come back and talk to the board and the board is like, this guy's got, we don't want to offer the top of the range. So I actually talked to the guy and we went back and forth. Anyway, we ended up offering the middle of the range, uh, with no annuity. So, um, so to me, there's an advantage in having, in being prepared before you make that call. Cause once you make the call and you're offering the position, then you basically put all your eggs in that basket. So, so if I do some pre-work, see, that's helpful to us to actually getting the deal done. So that's, that's my point on that. So, um, questions on that?
Well, I got a question now that you bring it up. We've got a five thousand dollar range. We'd be better off to just put a number in there rather than a range.
No, we need the range.
Okay.
We need the range because we're gonna know what they're currently making when we, when we go into this. So if somebody's currently making, you know, one oh five, we wanna, we wanna have a little room to move, you know? Um, but if we just put a number in there, it doesn't, it, we just need, we need some, some range. We need some range.
Just asking a question, somebody?
Yeah. Yeah, we need some range. But we don't want to have it be too big. So that's why I'm comfortable with, you know, five thousand dollar range.
Cause most people never look above the number.
If, um, you know, most of these positions at this size district are probably paying a little bit more than one oh five. But, um, we're not too far off with one oh five to one ten. I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I, I wouldn't mind if you wanted to go a little higher. But right now, you're already at one oh seven five. So to me, kind of right, we don't really need to increase it. Now, how's your, I didn't even ask about your financial. Are you guys in?
No, we just came out of deficit, so we haven't been able to find that.
We're not, we're not going back.
Wouldn't that be?
Right? Well, I know. And so we, we're, we're fine with one oh five or one ten. I feel comfortable with that. And, and you know, maybe like, like feature was one, um, feature was one fifteen, one twenty-five. So they ended up at one twenty.
Yeah, was this just small?
They're smaller now. They're like seven fifteen, eight, seven eighty.
Then they had that with Taliesin's. Probably that was a bit smaller.
Well, they were in deficit and they had treasury there. And he was making one twenty. He was making one twenty when he left. So we ended up paying the exact same to the new person. That's what, that's what we ended up at. So I didn't feel too bad about that, but that's, that's what they had decided. So they wanted to be competitive. They wanted to get, they wanted to get a, um, you know, superintendent. They wanted to get a person that had experience as a superintendent. That was not the case. Ended up with a principal. And, um, but yeah, that's why they, that's why they offered a little bit more. They could have probably, they could have been in the one fifteen range, you know? But then maybe this guy wouldn't have applied, you know? This is the, this is the question of how much you are willing to pay sometimes determines your pool. So this is why you want to be a little careful not to be too low. But.
Our administrators get three percent above base for a doctor.
Okay.
And superintendent, they have to, and three percent in line with that.
And that's, that would be in the contract. And that's a, that's an additional one in the contract.
So when you're talking about one oh five or one, one, whatever, ninety-five, seventy, that's quite a bit higher than our top level administrator.
Oh, yeah.
Our top level administrator is seventy-five thousand.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, they kept the superintendent's doctorate increase in line with the administrator's doctorate increase.
So when we start working on the contract, we should have a little input from you guys to make sure we're not, you know, we're kind of keeping things in line if that's what the board wants. So I don't want to get the superintendent contract to be completely out of line with what happens at the administration. So like, for example, if you like that type of extra stipend for a doctor, then we could put it in there. Normally, I don't put it in. But if it's already in for all the other administrators and that's, that's how you want to roll, then, then we could put it in. But I only put that in one, one of my contracts, Melissa, which was on Ling Westside. I put in, that one was for a doctor. Now, but the candidate had a doctor. So, so we ended up putting it in.
Well, I think that's why.
That's why I got it.
That you mentioned, he had a doctor. So I wondered, did it get up there? And now you had no recourse to go underneath, cause everybody was figuring whoever applied was gonna get what he got.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, see, I take all that stuff out when we're doing the contract.
The fact that we have a range allows that to be taken into consideration.
Yeah.
So I would say, I'm not gonna speak for the group, but I think the three percent thing should just go off the table.
But it's not in the contract, it's maybe you do a lot, right? Yeah. It's not in the contract. It's not in the contract.
Right. But I guess, we don't want to advertise it. We'll give the three percent.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Well, and, and the other thing is, is the other thing I should say, which maybe sounds like double speak here, but this is a separate contract.
Right.
It is not the same as the administrator's contract. So there are things that will be different. And I'm fine with that. But on the other hand, if everyone's getting twelve sick days, I don't necessarily want to give eighteen sick days for this one, right?
Right. I agree.
You know, you, you're, if you're the business manager, you like to administer contracts that are pretty similar. So I would probably want to put the same sick days, you know? Vacation, I usually would put twenty, not twenty-five, you know? I usually don't put stipends for cell phone, cell phones and vacation buybacks and, you know, sick leave buybacks. And all of that stuff that was in contracts at one point, I don't put it in there. Because, you know, this is like an opening gig. Once they get the job and they are successful and you like them, then you can say, all right, yeah, we'll, we'll put this in for you or we'll do this, you know? And that's how those things do get in. Cause you don't want to raise the salary, but you want to give them something. That's how they get in. So I'm not saying you just write it wrong. I'm just saying that's how it happens. Does that sound okay? But I'm gonna spend some time with you guys on the contract, next meeting. So we'll spend a little time, we'll have copies and we'll go over it and make sure you're comfortable with what we're talking about. I won't do anything that you guys don't want to do. Okay? All right?
We won't let you in.
All right. So, so the thirteenth then for the final round. And then site visits if you want to after that. And then, and then you'll have to decide when you're gonna approve the contract to get that done. Questions for me?
Yeah. When you were vetting these candidates, um, can you talk about the process that you use, please?
Yeah. So, so first of all, I know a lot of the candidates. So, um, I know where the bodies are buried, so to speak. But one, one of the things that we do do is I will call references, um, to try to, uh, understand what's going on. If there's anything I need to know. The other thing that we do is the professional, uh, background check. So we can do that prior to the second round. So in the first round, once we narrow it, then the second round, we can, we can write their district and try to get, um, a response. So I've done that a few times and gotten good response from their existing district, make sure there's nothing in there. Um, so those are the two things.
What about a previous district to that?
Uh, yeah, we could do that too. We just need permission from the candidates. So it's, it's really a simple process. I call them up to say, hey, you've been selected for the second round. I need permission from the last two districts to, to do a professional background check. And, uh, so if that's what you want, we can do that.
Why wouldn't you not do it? Why would somebody not do it?
Yeah. You know what I'm saying?
Is that just a, is it like a E A one eighty-nine or whatever form that's yes or no?
Yeah.
I don't get much information.
Well, you're just doing the, you know, you're, that's what it is.
Oh, okay. That doesn't tell you anything.
No. I mean, the other way is, you know, Google and newspaper articles and talking references. So I mean, that's, that's it. I mean, that's all we've really got at our disposal. I don't, unless the board, you know, I don't know, um, ethics, but not sure what else that would, you know, I haven't done anything else other than those two things.
Okay.
But we'll know more when we, when we see the candidates. You know, I'll know more, so. I mean, there is definitely some candidates that I would tell you when we're going through the process. So another thing we do is when we're doing the application review, we do it by number. So people in the audience who not know who we are talking about, cause they have a right to confidentiality. So I will tell you, the reason they're not in my top, so sometimes somebody will say, well, why isn't this person in your top group? You know? Well, there's reasons why. You know, and those are the, those are the things that I find out in regard to it, that I don't think it's gonna work. See what I mean? So without, you know, saying something publicly, we, we can have that information. So without, you know, saying something publicly, we, we can have that information. We usually do not go into closed session at any time during the search because, you know, it's not needed, we can, you know, and it's not well received by the public. There's been a couple of districts that have done it and they've gotten themselves in trouble over it. I don't know if you've seen that.
What's the reason?
That they go into closed session? Cause they think they can?
I was gonna say, it's not a legal reason to go.
No. No, they, and they get called on it every single time and then they get in trouble with the media and, and then there's an article and, you know, so. I mean, all the searches I've done, I've never gone in a closed session. So I just, I just would rather not do that, so.
Unless there's a legal reason to do that, there would be no reason to go.
So yes, that's what I do. So as we get closer, I can tell you, and when you see the candidates, you know, we can obviously see some things in the materials and then there could be some more checking that we wanna do. Right, at that time, you can say, hey, we wanna, we wanna do professional background checks on all of them so get permission from, from the ones that we're gonna interview to do that right away. You know, we could do that.
If somebody makes a claim on their early May and we were to ask, could you please validate that in fact this really happened? Is that something you can do?
Um, I think you could, depending on what it is. You know, you could ask me though to check that out. That's probably, that's probably how I would do it, is check out from an independent source rather than just asking the candidate.
That, let's say, say, if somebody's applying to our building principal and they said they took student performance and accelerated it to two hundred percent in a year, right?
Oh, yeah, show us, yeah, show us some data, yeah, absolutely.
Cause when you go over to that person and see the two hundred percent, it's, it's not there.
Yeah, yeah, you would think that, that we could do something with that, absolutely. What else, other questions? Bob says he's been through a few searches, Patrick? Not really?
Not for school.
You've been through a few? Okay. Well, what I'll tell you is that I'm gonna help you with every single aspect of it. So if you, like, for example, the other night, somebody said, well, candidate contacted me, what should I do? You just refer them to the process, you refer them to the consultant, you refer them to the district, you know? Any, anything about the search is always gonna be done here and open. And then once we pick the candidates or once you give the candidate packet, you can do all the Googling you want on these folks. You know, you can check them out independently through the internet. But you really can't call people until we're, we decide that that's how we're doing it. So it's not public until they accept an interview. So that day we're working on it, on, on April third, we'll be talking about them by number. So at the end of that night when we're done, we've got these five people or these six people or whatever, then I'll call all those people and we'll get them to accept an interview. And then we publish it the next day, you know, Robin gets the scoop, we give it to the media. Then you can start, you know, calling or if you wanted to. But usually at that point, we wait until the interviews. We've already decided who we're interviewing, so now we're interviewing. But you can definitely Google.
How do you have the selection of interview questions as a public meeting?
We, uh, the board looks at them and then we talk about them basically.
My, my point is if it's open to the public and the candidates have already all submitted their.
Yeah, it's, the, the questions will not be open to the public. So you'll get them, we'll review them and, and it'll be something like, how do you like question number one? Does that seem like that works? Do you wanna change a word? Yeah, we can, you know, that kinda discussion we have. So we go over it together and make sure you're all set on the questions, but we don't give them to people.
Now, what about candidates who show up for other candidates and interviews?
They, that's not allowed. I don't, I don't allow that.
It's a public meeting, how can you prevent it?
I just tell them that, don't, if you wanna be considered, don't, don't go.
Okay, that's why I'm asking the question.
I've never had that happen, but I have had candidates sit in the April third meeting, the, the screening of applications meeting. So just the other night, I had that happen. So a couple of candidates sit in the back because they're internal and then we're going over all the applications, but we're doing it by number. So nobody knows, you know, what you're really doing. And then you publish it the next day, you know? So we actually did the interview questions the other night too. And I had somebody from the audience ask me, can I see the questions? I was just like, no, you can't, sorry, you know? So, yeah, they're not, questions are not public, that's not public document.
Good. Until after the interview?
Till after the interview.
What about board members' notes on those questions during the course? Are those open to FOIA?
It could be FOIA-able, so you should always be careful what notes you write. It could be FOIA-able, but I haven't ever had that happen, but I tell people, you know, use a one, two, or three kind of a process. One, you really like the answer, or three, you really like it, two, you know, one, or whatever your system is. Try to keep track as you're doing. So we'll give you a sheet of paper with the questions, you can kinda make a couple of notes, keep track. But yeah, you should always be aware that anything you're writing at the board table could eventually be FOIA-ed if, you know, if somebody was interested that much.
Why would people FOIA the questions?
Well, they can, but it'll be too late by the time they get them, y'all.
They won't be eligible for FOIA until after the event occurred.
They won't become, they won't be considered a public document, I think.
Right, once we.
So while you're developing them.
Yeah, that, that's not gonna be public, yeah.
Other questions?
Are you excited? It's, it is exciting. We will have some, I think, some good candidates. I've already talked to a couple of people that are interested, which I was excited about. And I don't know if you're aware that I, I teach aspiring superintendents class workshop for people. So I get a chance to see the people that are interested in becoming superintendents and of course, that gives me an advantage to talking to people and seeing what they're like before they ever apply for positions, so. So that, my first class is this Saturday. So I'm excited, I got sixteen people and, hey, you never know. So I'm excited and I think there's a lot to offer here. I know, you know, Melissa, you've been helping out the last few weeks, right? Or a few months or whatever and, and so I'm sure you're ready to hand over the reins at some point.
I'm waiting for them to get my person, but I'm not ready. Let anybody come.
That's right, good for you, all right. Well, thank you all, I appreciate it. And I'll send you all this stuff, Robin, so I'll send you a new thing here and I'll, and I'll get you that info to get the, the website, the one and all that.
Can you invite, let me survey?
Yep.
All right.
Nice to meet everybody.
Board and superintendent comments, Nancy?
Excuse me?
Board and superintendent comments, I think.
Have a nice weekend.
Yeah, John?
Also?
Yeah.
I'll shut, thank you.
Melissa?
No.
Okay, return, thank you.
Thank you, guys.